All right, I would like to call ordinances, elections, legislative matters to order at 6:45. I have one piece of business I'd like to bring out tonight.
You got anybody here?
From, yep, I have Councilor Dolan.
Oh, okay.
From the docket, thank you, Councilor Blair. From the docket in November 7th, 2017, I entertain a motion to adopt the following ordinance. Ordinance relative to a temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments. Be it ordained by the municipal council that Chapter 1 general provisions of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro is hereby amended by adding the following new section. Temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments. Section 1-16 moratoriums. Section 1-16.1 Purpose. At the state election held on November 8th, 2016, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts approved a law regulating the cultivation, distribution, possession, and use of marijuana for non-medical purposes, codified as Chapter 334 of the Acts of 2016, quote-unquote "the Act subsequently amended in part by Chapter 351 of the Acts on 2006." The Act took effect on December 15th, and among other requirements requires a cannabis control commission to issue regulations regarding, excuse me, the licensing of commercial activities by March 15th, 2018, and to begin accepting application for licenses on April 1st, 2018. At this time, a non-medical marijuana establishment herein after a marijuana establishment, as defined in General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, is not specifically addressed in the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro. Accordingly, marijuana establishments are not permitted, are not a permitted use in the city regulations promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission, are expected to provide guidance to the city in regulating marijuana establishments. The regulation of marijuana establishments rave novel in complex legal, planning, public safety issues, and the city needs time to study and consider the regulation of marijuana establishments to address these issues. Further, it is necessary for the city to address the potential impact of the Act in the not-yet-promulgated state regulations on zoning, public safety, and public welfare, and to undertake a planning process to appropriately address these concerns through ordinances and other applicable laws and regulations, consistent with the Act and future regulations. Therefore, the city intends to adopt a temporary moratorium on the use of land and structures in the city for marijuana establishments, so as to allow the city sufficient time to engage in this planning process to address the effects of such structures and uses in the city, and to adopt ordinances in a manner consistent with sound land-use planning goals and objectives, consistent with both the Act and future regulations. 16-1.2 Definitions. Marijuana establishment, a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses, all as defined under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1. 16-1.3 Temporary moratorium. For the reasons set forth above, notwithstanding any other provision of the revised ordinances of the Attleboro, to the contrary, the city hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for medical, I'm sorry, for marijuana establishments. The moratorium shall be in effect through December 31st, 2018, unless extended, modified, or rescinded by a subsequent action of the municipal council or the result of ballot action by voters. Two, the use of land and/or structures for marijuana establishments and/or any related uses shall not be permitted in any zoning district in this city so long this temporary moratorium is effective. Use variance shall be strictly prohibited. Three, during the moratorium period, the city shall undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of recreational marijuana in the city. Consider the Cannabis Control Board regulations regarding marijuana establishments and related uses. Determine whether the city shall restrict any or all licenses for marijuana establishments. Determine whether the city will prohibit onsite consumption at marijuana establishments, and consider adopting new provisions of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to address the impact and operation of marijuana establishments and related uses, or take any other action in relation thereto. Four, in the event of any conflict between provisions of this ordinance and other applicable state or local law, the stricter provisions as deemed by the building inspector shall control. Five, the provisions or ordinances are severable. If any provision, paragraph, sentence, or clause of the ordinance is found to be invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or application of this ordinance to the extent permitted by the law. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage.
Good job.
Thank you.
That was a lot.
Woo wee! Thank you, Ms. Dolan. So it's important to note that this is a moratorium, and it's not a ban on marijuana, recreational marijuana, or marijuana establishments. What it is, is a protection, a safety net, to ensure zoning, the zoning and land use committee, whoever's going to be sitting here in a week at this point, will have enough time and resources to enact an ordinance that makes sense for the city. As I've stated with other ordinances, I don't want to see us rush into something to get it on the books, or conversely, just kick the can down the road. I want to make sure that we have an ordinance in place that makes sense, and a moratorium with a hot expiration date will achieve that. I have a lot of faith in our planning department, our police department, Chris Honorabotti, and of course, the zoning and land use committee, that will use the time in this moratorium to enact an ordinance that gives the city of Attleboro appropriate control over recreational marijuana as we head into these uncharted waters. As I mentioned, the state plans to have their regulations, and by March, we'll start to accept applications in April, with approvals coming as early as June or July. So without a moratorium, that's a tight timeline for any municipality to have to navigate within. This moratorium will give us the appropriate time to ensure we get the right piece of legislation in place on our timeframe. It gives us, as a city, more control as to what we feel is appropriate to be here. I would rather have a moratorium in place and not need it than need a moratorium and not end up having it. And again, I think it's important to point out that the voters of the city voted in favor of recreational marijuana, and that has to be recognized, and we can't gloss over that fact. But that being said, we have a well-written ordinance in front of us, and I believe President Cook, you were one of the authors, if not the wordsmith. I think you put some of the longest-alive accords in there to trip me up, so nice try.
Absolutely.
But I think that what I would look to do, Mrs. Dolan, is make an amendment from December 31st to the first regular meeting in October for the expiration date, so, which I believe would be October 2nd. So if you would entertain, indulge me in a second?
A second.
Thank you. So the reason I wanted to do this, I feel the deadline gives the zoning and land use committee enough time to work on the ordinance. It also takes into account the abridged summer schedule that we have, and then when we come back, September's always a busy month. I think that, I initially was thinking that right around September 15th would be a date that would make sense, but I think there's still a lot coming back into session after the summer break. There's always a lot of stuff on our table. One thing that I liked about this is where it says that we can rescind it at any time. So if we end up in a situation where, you know, come March, we have the ordinance in place, then we can rescind it at that time. I think that December 31st is a pretty, it's a long time between now and then to get an ordinance in place. So those are my comments. I know they were kind of lengthy, but anything you'd like to add, or?
No, I agree. I think we should strive to be able to rescind it as far as getting it done earlier. That's really my only comment. I think that's a decent amount of time to be able to get something in place.
I think it's a good comment, and I agree wholeheartedly. So now we'll take a vote. Well, anyone else, President Cook and then President, President Preco. Whoa, you just got promoted.
Thanks. Good.
President Cook.
No, please.
No, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. I, again, I thought you did a good job of explaining why you wanted to amend it to another date. As you all know, there is another piece of new business that was brought in to develop a ordinance dealing with marijuana establishments. That's the official term that we use for recreational marijuana. And therefore, I know that that is, there's already some work being done on the draft. But if you remember, when we had the medical marijuana ordinance, the state was, similar to this time, like this time, dragging their feet. So, and yet we had people knocking at the door, and this is a little bit different in that the state is not accepting the applications yet. And so therefore, we had to, you know, when we implemented our ordinance, the state was, because we had people coming in the door, the state was still playing around, you know, with what they were going to do with it. And that's why after we had our ordinance in place, and where it began the process, then the state came down with their rules, and they made a change. So there's one thing on our medical marijuana, which is why it was brought in to make an amendment in it, that, you know, we're requiring in the medical marijuana, for example, that the applicant has to present something to us. They can't get that until he gets something from us, because that was a change at the state level. So the whole idea, from having talked to the city solicitor, who had conversations with the Attorney General's office, was to take and, you know, develop a, an ordinance that would deal with the marijuana establishments, but to give us time, and so we don't repeat history, to have a moratorium in effect. The Attorney General did specify a specific date, so the one thing I would ask is that, ask, I know you mentioned October 2nd, let's just verify before the meeting that it is October 2nd as that actual date, because the Attorney General did say that it had to be a specific date. We can't do something like, you know, the first Tuesday following the third Monday of, you know, of the month, or whatever it happens to be. But other than that, as I said, this, the major thing is this, this is not an attempt to override the will of the people. This was simply to give the city time to actually develop an ordinance and have it in place, so that when the licensing comes in, excuse me, when the state starts to accept licenses, which right now they're saying they're going to be releasing something, and again, they've moved the date again, I wouldn't be surprised to see them move it yet again. Sure. But, and that's why I want to give us enough time. Right now, they're saying March 15th, or by March 15th, they're going to release, but they're going to start accepting licenses, applications, on the 1st of April. So we really need to, two weeks is not enough time to convene, advertise, convene a joint public hearing with the planning board. They have up to 21 days to give us a response, vote, and have it in place. Because if we do not have a ordinance in place at the time they start to accept licenses, we miss the book. So, as I said, it is important to, you know, to remember that. As I said, as always, thank you.
No, thank you, and, you know, kudos to you, President Cook, because I feel that the way this was written gives us enough flexibility if we need it to be flexible, but I think it also gives us enough of what we're trying to do to be flexible in the event that dates change, regulations change, expectations change. So, Council Hall, then Council Blair.
Sure. And just to let you know, so everybody does know as we're going transitioning forward, that I have already started working on a, first of all, first thing we needed to do was to shore up our RMD ordinance, because that in itself sort of gave us some of the inclination to do what we're doing today. We had difficulties, if you would, executing our ordinance that we had written for RMD. Not that that was a bad thing, it was a very good thing, but it kind of showed us that we needed to make sure that we shored that up first. So we're in the process of shoring that up to have a baseline, hopefully, for the recreational marijuana. And I've also started staffing it, believe it or not, staffing it already through the solicitor and through other departments to take a look at that particular regulation, and to also with the thought process of looking towards medical marijuana establishments and what we wanted to see in addition to this, you know, in addition to that. So that's coming down. In doing that, just so you know, what makes this even more complicated, I did not know. But there are certain acts that we can accept here at the town, in the town itself, that could change some of the language for us personally in Attleboro. So we need to become more familiar with those, too. I just thought those were part of the original law, and then I found out that certain things that we had to actually put on our docket here, and to, you know, see if we wanted to accept those here at this city. So those are going to be very, very important, that we're able to see what those acts are that we can also customize here in Attleboro. So there is a few things. So I appreciate the moratorium. I think it's really important, for those reasons, we're going to see more of this come down. There's going to be changes to the two regulations. There hasn't been a complete, the complete, if I can, let me make sure I get this right, 95 to 94G?
94G.
94G. The complete 94G, the revised 94G, hasn't even been written yet. There's revisions to it, but it hasn't even come out in its total. So I think because of that, we really do need to put a moratorium on it till we can see that, to understand the acts that we can accept here, and some of the other things that we might want to see in Attleboro to add to this. So I foresee an ordinance, and then a couple amendments to the ordinance, and everything else, so.
Yeah, I mean, especially when, and thank you for your comments, because this is something that's going to be ever-changing as the state gets their ducks in a row. So I think that, and, yeah, absolutely, with the certain acts that a city, that the city can enact, Council Conti and I were speaking about that earlier, so there's a lot. It's very cumbersome, so I think we're being proactive by enacting this. And again, I need to stress that this is a moratorium and not a ban. This is giving us the air cover we need as a city to be able to go through and make sure that we have our ducks in a row. So, you know, and I'll just mention it before anyone else does, so we don't have another XXX store downtown, so.
It's okay. Please, I see.
I just want to thank you, Jay, publicly, because it meant a lot to me and my constituents, the calls I've had, that they're worried about this. So if we can get the ducks in order, and get the protection that's needed and whatnot, I think the moratorium will give us time to look at it. And I was just afraid, myself personally, the state would do something that wouldn't give us the time to do it right. So I thank you for bringing this out. I appreciate it very much, and I know the people that have contacted me appreciate it also, because I know I'm from an older generation, maybe I'm getting a lot of older people talking to me, but the people that put me in office, and those are the people that, I think, need a voice. So, thank you very much.
And I appreciate it.
Absolutely, my pleasure. And, you know, there's something that, when it was brought in in October, that, you know, was on my radar, that we want to take care of, just because as President Cook said, I mean, we had time, but, no, thank you for the kind words, and I think I've received some of the same calls, so.
Thank you.
Council Preco.
Thank you, Chairman Delicio. I think, so I'll be supporting the moratorium. I appreciate backing it up, because I think it's appropriate to strike a balance between the voters who voted in the affirmative for it, and others that, you know, your constituents who have concerns about it. And also, to quote one of my fellow counselors, it makes us creating the ordinance as it pertains to this particular topic, a top priority. So we, it's important that, we have many important things that we deal with on a regular basis, but this needs to be a strong focus for the individual that's in charge of zoning.
Right.
And it's my hope that, also, I like, I also to echo Councilor Dolan's comments, I enjoy, I like the fact that we can rescind it if necessary.
Absolutely.
My plan for this evening was to come in and make the request for September 11th, as opposed to October, but I'll cede that. I'll give you two, that's not a good deal, two more weeks. That's fine, huh? That's your Christmas, President Blair. See, look at your friends. So you will have my support in front of the full council.
I appreciate that, thank you. Any other comments or concerns on this? Seeing none, I need to vote on the amendment first, and then we'll go back and vote on the motion. All those in favor of the emotion, excuse me, the amendment, paraphrasing, changing it from December 31st to October 2nd? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And now to the motion as revised, I'm not going to read that again, so you're all lucky for that. But all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes, and I would call for an adjournment at 7:03. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you, all of you in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you all, that was a lot of reading.
Next?
It would be City Prop. and Clemens. Oh, actually, this one is, excuse me, that's City Prop. and Clemens. Capital improvements and President, those are the two. Either one can go, because we both, we passed the 6:47.
Is Sarah coming in tonight?
No, she's not. That's my understanding, she's not coming.
I believe that she made that announcement.
Right, she made that announcement, and she said if there's any change, she'd let us know, and to the best of my knowledge, there was no change. Thank you. Maybe that'll be your, go by that.
Go by that.
I'd like to call the Capital Improvements and City Development Committee to order at 7:04. Sitting on my committee tonight is Councilor Cooper and President Cook, as we have Jackson absent, Higginson absent, and Reynolds absent, and Mr. Delicio is absent. I have several matters to bring before you this evening from the docket of January 2nd, 2018. I move to approve the request of the mayor to transfer the following. $3,448 from account number 3547-599000, Council on Aging Boiler, other financing uses, to account number 3546-499000, Library Projects, other financing sources, and $84,553.70 from account number 33, I'm sorry, 3537-599000, DPW Facility, other financing uses, to account number 3546-499000, Library Projects, other financial sources. Please note a two-thirds vote of council be when we get there, but for us, it's just a simple up or down, yes or no. Also, $4,934.15 from account number 3528-599000, Animal Shelter Fund, other financing uses, to account number 3546-499000, Library Project, other financing sources, and $346.90 from account number 3514-599000, Radios, Fire, and Police, other financing uses, to fund number 3546-499000, Library Projects, other financing sources. And lastly, $12,026.16 from account number 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to account number 11241000-599000, Citywide Other Financing Uses. And then to further transfer from 11241000-599000, Citywide Other Financing Uses, to account number 3546-499, Library Project, Other Financing Sources.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cooper. So, what our city auditor has done is she mailed us an email letter last, December 19th, and in it, she stated in her fourth paragraph of the letter that she's reviewed the general ledger, and she's, she received inputs from both Capital Projects Administrator and the project managers for the, for these projects that I just discussed. And she evaluated the sources of funds used for these capital projects, as the sources from where the funds come from dictate how the funds can be trained. And when this, where some of these were left over from a bond authorization, the city treasurer was consulted for use of the funds prior to recommending a transfer to the library project. And the funds are restricted, so it has been cleared through both the city auditor and the city treasurer that these leftover funds, some of which we're still paying interest on for the next several years, is is money left over from the projects and can be transferred to this, to this account. What this account is for is the library needs $125,000 just to do the architectural and engineering study, to go out to bid to find out what needs to be done on the roof. And they've, when I attended the school building commission meeting on the first Wednesday of this month, they had six packages of firms that wanted to do the architectural engineering. They reviewed them on a scale that they do each time they do this, and they picked which ones they wanted to send out for bid. So the $125,000 gets the capital improvement project manager and the municipal building commission into that first stage to go out to bid and find out how much this is going to cost. It's going to be expensive. And we're fortunate that we have $105,000, I added it up here, these sums total $105,308.91. I've learned a lot about bonding in this exercise, because I was kind of surprised that we had $84,000 left over from the DPW facility. That's a big, big number. And it, it may be that future bonding is a little different than the way we've done bonding in the past. We'll see. But I would recommend the passage of this measure, because it takes $105,308 that we have and puts it to the $125,000 that we need. Where is the other $20,000 coming from? I don't know. I didn't have an opportunity to get an answer. This has been a crazy week with Christmas and the Olsen family, and I just haven't gotten as many phone calls that there's, I would like to get answers to. So that, I, I no longer have a committee.
Yes, just the two of us.
You're fine.
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 You answered my question about the bond funds, the $84,000. Thank you for that. That seemed like a big number to me when the other ones were much smaller. You know, I think we have to do it. We were told pretty clearly that there were issues that weren't there several months ago when the engineer or project manager came forward on the project that we thought we were doing there, that they weren't able to complete. They sort of stopped and did what they could do to secure it, and here we are. And we knew it was going to be expensive, and he hesitated at giving us a number for the job, and I think you might have floated one out there to him, and he didn't flinch when you said that number. So we all sort of know it's coming. You know, the obvious question is going to be, how do we pay for it? We don't know where the $20,000 is going to come from. Where do we, you know, we know where the rest of it's going to come from, we're going to have to borrow it. So that's, that's unfortunate, but we are where we are, and I'm in full support, so. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
It may be that we will be able to fund the additional $20,000 when we know what our bid is and we go out for bond for the cost of the project. We may be able to slide that last $20,000 into that bond. And, and I wouldn't be opposed to that, because it's all one thing, you know. But I do, I do think that this is a good move. And rather than seeing these, these dollars, some of these dollars cannot go into the general fund. So it's nice to see them going into a capital project.
Just one other comment. I think that Deb was likely anticipating your question when she said, in the last part of this paragraph, she says, "It should be noted that the use of bond funds is restricted, and when these capital projects are finished, the funds cannot be used for operational expenses of the departments." I feel like you sort of anticipated what the question would have been and gave it to us pretty clearly, so I was happy to read the response, and I think we have to do it.
Yep. Any other comments, Council Cooper?
Just the reason I stepped out was I know the, the middle two items in there, you had read that it requires a two-thirds vote of the council, because the remaining bond, and I understand that. And I'm just having, I was asking Linda to check, because I'm just looking at this. Let's say for argument's sake, that there's only, that would require eight votes. And let's say for whatever reason, you know, when we vote on this measure, that, you know, the vote comes down, there's only seven. I'm not sure if those two have to be, I'm having to research this, if those two items have to be voted separately, since they do require eight, which I think that they may have.
In my measure for the regular council meeting, I have that, that roll call vote is required.
Right.
And.
Well, it is a roll call vote, that's.
Yeah, and I'm making a note now that we need two-thirds on the whole vote.
Okay. I'm having Linda double check it, if it's just, you know, I mean, I, I just want to make sure we're, if it has to be separated out, that we do it at this point, that's all.
Yep.
I was having to check, and that's why I stepped out.
Anyone else have any other comments?
I have a question. I'm just confused about the $20,000. Looking at the memo, it looks to me like it's $12,000, because she says that it's just $12,000 needed.
Council Hall, this, this, this motion totals $105,308.91. The docket, if you read the first paragraph in the docket, the architectural engineering firm for phase two of the library roof replacement and building envelope HVAC repair project is being, is going to be done by ABM Group Construction Managers, who's been hired, had an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Right, I see that.
It may not cost $125,000, but we're only transferring $105,308 into the account. If he does need an additional $20,000, I would suggest that it would come out of the project bond.
Okay, but, okay, that's why I was confused. So what do we ask? I know she's asking for an additional $12,000.
No. I think you may be confusing.
I'm looking at her letter. So I am confused, but I'm looking at her letter.
If you would restrict your review of her letter to the page one of three pages, you'll be on track with us.
Well, I'm looking at her breakdown of the, yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Don't go there, because that does not relate to this.
Okay.
The motion's in order. Any other comments? On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Three As, zero NAs, motion passes. From the docket of January 2nd, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $9,900 from account 1000-359000, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash, General Government, to account 15411000-530108, Council on Aging Engineering, for the engineering of HVAC roof units.
Second.
Thank you, Council Cooper. In the Capital Improvement Program book, on page 26, you will see that she has four projects in the Capital Improvement book, one of which, the first one, is to replace the HVAC bypass dampers, which is to replace variable frequency drives and controls on the train unit located on the rooftop of the senior center, to reduce noise caused by low capacity operation. And the estimate is $26,012.50. This seems to indicate that it's gotten to be a bigger issue. I haven't had an opportunity to contact Madeline McNeely during this holiday season to get an explanation. So I'm a little uncomfortable with this unit, with this project, because it's not in the Capital Improvement book, and it's almost for the total amount for the, what is in the Capital Improvement book. So what was in the Capital Improvement book was for $26,012, this, this measure's looking for $9,900 for engineering. I have more questions than I have answers on this case. Yes?
Me. So I have some questions, too, but I'm also in favor of spending the $9,900, because I see Madeline, you know, lots of mornings, her car is there very early, and I asked her in passing one day, "Why are you here so early?" And as she was unlocking, unlocking the door, she said, "I'm praying that the heat works."
Well, she has a new boiler now.
Yeah, but there's problems there, right? So it didn't go away. We saw it when we were there, that we went up that back hallway, up onto, we didn't go up onto the roof, but we had an opportunity to look, and there were other problems beyond the boiler. So, and she's been pretty vocal about that to us over the years, so I'm, I'm okay with this. I'll support it. But I think that getting some questions to the discrepancy is, is important if she needs to get this done for any active problems that she's having now, because I'm not sure that the two aren't connected. If she's still getting there early and praying for the heat to come on, you know, I don't know if it's upstairs, the downstairs, you know, I have the same questions that you do. Is it upstairs? Is it downstairs? Is this just ventilation through the building? What is this for? And I'm sure, as we all are, when we, when you call and ask her, she's going to be ready for us, because she's probably watching. Or somebody that's going to be at the senior center early with her is watching and going to tell her. But I, I think that we, I don't want to delay it for, I guess, is what I'm, is what I'm saying. And a roundabout way.
Well, delaying it wouldn't be long. We should be able to get these answers rather quickly after the holiday season passes. It looks like she's replacing the train unit rather than repairing it.
Did she give any additional detail in her?
I have that here, too, and I, maybe I missed that. I think I have that here.
Yes.
Excuse me one minute, I think I have it behind my chair.
Let's do it.
I don't, no, sorry, one more. So I'm, I'm thinking that we would like to get that support. So I won't be, I won't be voting in favor of letting this out of committee, because there's too many questions that need to be answered. Any other comments?
Are you going to, you're not going forward with it, or you are?
I, I don't think we should go forward with it. I think we should hold it, because there's too many questions. And we have a motion, and we have a second, so we have to take a vote on it.
Or we draw the second, one of the others.
Or rescind, or rescind the second.
I, I'll rescind it in one second. After I finish going through that thing from last week.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
See if I see anything. Sorry. Yeah, I don't see it either. So I'm happy to rescind, but I'm hoping that the.
We'll put it on the fast track, I'm sure. I'm sure we will. So, "From the docket of January 2nd, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $10,800 from account 1000-359000, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash, General Government, to account 16501000-585046, Kubota Mower, 54-inch, for a new park department mower."
Second.
So the Kubota mower is in the capital improvement plan. This is a rather straightforward measure. I don't think, this really takes much debate. Yeah, it's a number one. So, this is the mayor, too, also for the, Council, Councilor Farica, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, it's simply a comment. I, I thought it was interesting that there was a request for a similar Kubota mower for recreation, because there was a difference in size, and obviously a difference in price. And so I did ask the question, as it pertained, like, why, you know, why are we, why are we opting for 54 instead of going larger? But it's to really accommodate some of the new parks that are, get, that it's the size of that would accommodate, like, Little Town Drive and the other parks, instead of having a larger mower, which may not work the way they need it to work for that apartment. And their other mowers are about 752 years old, so.
Yeah, I once asked.
Because they break down all the time.
How's that? I once asked Dash Walz how many acres that he was farming. He's the biggest farmer in the city, and it's stunning, and I forget what his answer was, but it's an enormous amount of ground.
And then he doubled it when he took over Park and Forest, right?
Correct, correct. So I'm recommending the passage of this measure. And is there any further comment? Motion's in order, all in favor?
Not my turn. But yes, I would support it in front of the full council.
"From the docket of January 2nd, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $27,915, account 1000-359000, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash, General Government, to account 16301000-585046, Kubota Mower, 72 inches, for a new recreation department mower."
Second.
Thank you, Council Cooper. Also in the capital improvement plan, also a priority number one, I would recommend the passage of this measure. Does anyone have any comments? Seeing none, motions in order, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. "I move, from the docket of January 2nd, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $44,169.40 from account 1000-359000, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash, General Government, to account 15431000-58251, Veterans Monument, for the Veterans Department renovation of the Civil War monument."
Second.
Thank you, Council Cooper. I'm going to call on President Cook to expound and explain the $44,169.40.
Okay, thank you. Chairman, I'm calling. First, I do want to declare, publicly declare, as required, my involvement with the Civil War Monument Committee, as the chairman of that ad hoc committee, and also that I filed all the appropriate paperwork that was, that's required with the, you know, with the city clerk. The amount of money, this project in the past has been in the capital improvements book. It was not in this particular version. And I think the reason that it was not included when they were putting that booklet together, speculation, was the fact that there was a committee, we had a presentation here about a year or so ago, and there has been some fundraising going on. At this point in time, the, we actually, the city actually went out, the city owns the monument, the city had to be the ones to go out and request, they did request for quotes, not a request for bids, given the monetary amount. And there, there were numerous bids, excuse me, quotes that were received, and according to the standards, the one that the purchasing department accepted, with qualifications that were met and so forth, came out to a figure of, it was $40,000 and change, but they always, but the purchasing department wanted to add in a 10% contingency. I can tell you that there were some. I can tell you that there was some fundraising efforts going on, including some applying for grants. No work is going to be done in this, obviously, until A, the money's secured, and B, the weather, you know, is going to be, has to be much, much better in order to actually do the work on it. So there, at this point, for, it appears that on one of the grants we're applying for, we have to be able to demonstrate that we have the, the funding in place in order to, to apply for this one particular grant. So this is going to help further the process along, along. My gut feeling is, there were some of the other grants going along, that the amount, that this amount may very well be diminished when we get to the point, but it's not going to be expended, you know, right during the winter months, obviously.
So how much have you raised through fundraising?
I just, I've, I've asked that question, and I have not gotten any answer. I was told it's a few hundred dollars that we've gone at this point. I know that, I, I know that, I remember the very first donation we got and how much it was, only because it was the very first one, and then there have been additional, you know, monies that have come in, but on the time I had, I haven't requested that information, I just don't have it. I've not got an answer, a final answer on that, thank you.
And so the city acted as the agent to go out and get bids?
It had to.
Yep, and so you do have bids?
Yes, quotes.
Quotes?
Quotes.
And those quotes have a time limit?
I believe it's forty-five days from the time that they, that it was all handled. And my understanding is that they, that the person that they selected, they have notified. But I, I tried to, I tried to check today to see if we got a response, because I know that it happened a week ago, and that that person had gone home, you know, and yesterday was, was on...
It's a difficult week to try to get ahold of anyone.
Oh, absolutely.
I sympathize with you, I've been trying like crazy.
I, I've often maintained that, that if you want to do a corporate takeover, this is the week to do it.
Absolutely.
Because the whole country's being run by underlings at this point. So I, I, you know, I will see that, that information gets, and, and I can't tell you the plans how to keep not only the council, but the city informed in terms of the progress.
So in light of the fact that you're applying for grants, are those grants going to be awarded by the time your quotes expire?
I know that one of, one that we are applying, we had submitted a letter of intent, they accepted the letter of intent, the full application is due on January sixteenth, and they're going to render a decision on January thirty-first. Okay. So, and I think in terms of the date that the quote went out, I believe, I'm trying to remember when the quotes went out, or when they were accepted, they were accepted, it was just before, it was, I'm just doing the counts. I think that, that the January thirty-first date would be past that date, I believe. If I remember correctly, because I believe the date that the quotes were received or had to be in was November the twenty-first, and then it was forty-five days, I believe, that we had to execute. And again, I was trying to nail this down, but with vacation schedules and skeleton staffs, it's been tough. So at that point, given the forty-five days, and we had to notify the person, and then there's additional time to actually do the work, because you can't do it in the winter, that they were going to, they would hold the price for, I think it was, for a certain number of months thereafter. But I believe that the deadline for our notification, off the top of my head, I believe...
Is that right?
What?
I think the quotes were accepted, I think it was right before Christmas.
I think it was November twenty-first.
Yeah, right, but Carol accepted them, she followed me to send a note, send out to the person who was... Yeah, so it was right before Christmas, I think she...
Right, it was before Christmas, she sent it out, right. So I think the forty, the forty-five days have started on the day that we got the, is she there?
Nope, she left.
Peter, why not open the door, please? The forty-five days for them, that they had to respond was, once they received the bids or the quotes, they had forty-five days to notify.
Correct, and she did, yeah.
And she did.
She followed me, it was right before the holidays, yeah. Like, right before the Christmas holiday.
Right, right before the Christmas holidays, yeah. If I remember correctly, it was, I think it was a week before Thanksgiving, it was on a Wednesday when the, when the quotes were open and read. And then it was, and then I know it was, the letter went out, I believe it was last week, then the letter went out, within the forty-five days. And I don't know if that person, I don't want to say the name because I don't know if they've responded yet, and that's what I was trying to find out before tonight's meeting, but...
So if, 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 if we will know that we may receive a grant on January sixteenth...
No, 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 we won't know January, they're, they're going to be awarding the grant, make a decision on January thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
January thirty-first. The application is due, once the letter of intent was accepted, and then they gave us a month to, to get the formal, final application in, or the full application in.
So if, if we...
Just in one of the ones that we're pursuing.
Right. So I guess my, my logical question is, if we think we may be getting a grant on January thirty-first, why don't we take up this measure in February?
Because we have to show that we have funding in place for this grant, it's part of the application, if I remember correctly.
Oh, the grant is dependent upon the city contributing funds?
No, it's, it's that, the funding, if I, the funding, funding has to be in place, or, or they're relying on the funding, funding for this. So then if we get the grant, we'll need this form out. Because I know we have to provide information on the funding mechanism that we're doing. I, I have not been involved in writing grants before, so this is new experience to me.
And, and new to me, too.
It's definitely a learning, there's a definitely a learning curve on this. And again, it's, I will admit this has been, been a more, a more complicated process than when I came up with the idea of, of, of having this hundred-and-nine-year-old monument, you know, restored. So, but I can tell you, as I said, we're, we're doing it in, in as expedient and a cost-effective means as is possible.
So the grant is dependent upon the city obligating...
We have, we have to show that we have, that we are coming up with a funding.
We're serious.
Yeah. Peter, I want to get, Linda again. I want to get Linda again. For the Christmas, you know, over the Christmas, we've been... She's, she's, she does all the administrative work on the committee.
Yes. A lot of our grants that we've accepted, we've had to show that the funding was in place in order to apply for the grant. So I don't think this is anything, in my own opinion, I don't think this is anything unusual. We, if you can remember, we've done that a number of times. Funded something in order to apply for the grant, you've got to show the funding is here.
What I remember, Councilor, is that we would get a grant and there would be a matching fund requirement. But we would, but we would have received the grant.
And also, but we've also had to show that the funding was here. Some of our parks and whatnot, we had to put the upfront money on, upfront, in order to get the grants. I mean, that's a norm. I think if you can remember, and I can't tell you what specific projects they were, but that's a norm. We've gone through that before.
I have Linda checking on that right now, so.
Okay, thank you. Council Cooper?
Council Conkey, I'll, I'll remind you of one. Angel Park, right, Gary came before us, he did a presentation on Angel Park for a hundred and ninety-something thousand bucks, and he said, "We're going out to get a grant, and if we get it, we're going to do it, and if we don't get the grant, we're not going to do it." And we got the money back. And then he came back and said, "We need a hundred thousand bucks to do it," and we found the money from CDBG, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there have been recent examples that I can remember where the city has had to fund projects in order to apply for grants and then make a decision on whether or not they're going to do it. In, in that case, the, the, the decision was, and the, the presentation was, that they were going to fund it, but they weren't going to do it if they didn't get the grant. And they, they did exactly that.
Council Cooper, do you have additional information you wish to...
Do you have a...
I just, I haven't, but I know we...
...the ability to provide matching funds. Where is it? It was financially, the ability to provide matching... So, so your question was in terms of...
Oh, my gosh.
That the, we have to, in the application, we have to provide the total cost of the project, the cash contribution secured to date, which is what I'm working on right now, total income contribution secured, secured to date. And what else is it saying? May I attach this? Oh, yeah, and any, and any matching funds. Attach any letters of commitment for matching funds and in-kind services, you may attach this, there's something in here, letters of, it says, a letter of support, yeah, a letter of commitment for matching funds, project notification form. Again, we're still working on, on filling this out at this moment, as I said, this is my birth time dealing with grant.
Okay.
So, but any of the money that, you know, the idea is that, I'm correct in wrong, Linda, that any of the grant money we have, if we grant money in terms of this, it's going to be applied towards that amount.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Thank you, Linda.
The motion's in order, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. "From the document of January 2nd, 2018, I approve the request of the mayor to appropriate fifty-seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars and twelve cents from account 1-0-0-0-3-5-9-0-0-0, undesignated fund balance free cash, general government to fund number three five four five, Tilda B. Stone for Phase Two of the Recreation Department, Tilda B. Stone Field renovation."
Second.
Thank you, Council Cooper. The Tilda Thurber renovation, Phase Two, includes, um... South Attleboro Veterans Memorial Playground to install an irrigation system in the area surrounding the zebra. Sorry, sorry, Tilda B. Stone, there I am, Phase Two-B. It entails implementing the recommendations made by the certified playground instructor. In a report dated June ninth, two thousand fourteen, the inspector reviewed all the apparatus and corresponding fall areas with respect to applicable safety codes and ADA requirements. And the capital project includes removing and replacing swings and play structures, adding fall protection material, and adding perimeter edging. It's cited in chapter nine point, one point two of the two thousand nine Open Space and Recreation Plan. Yes, Council Cooper?
My only comment, I'm, I'm in full support of this measure, but I heard you say two thousand fourteen, and this is two thousand eighteen, almost. So the two thousand fourteen code and ADA requirements, just making sure that there weren't any changes between then and now in that code, and we're going to spend six, almost sixty grand, and then, uh-oh, we didn't, we didn't do it right. So if we could just verify, are you going to vote these tonight?
Well, if, if, if we, if we want to get this question resolved, if you resolve, if you rescind your second, we can get the answer before we vote it out. And we can put it on the fast track for next year.
Excuse me, if I might.
Council Cooper has the floor.
So I, I'm interested in hearing other comments, but I, I'm hesitant because, were there any change requirements between two thousand fourteen and today in ADA or the playground code? I would, I'm sure they'll bring it up to that code, but if it's going to cost us more money, I think we have to talk about that.
So do you think you should rescind your second?
Not at the moment, but I, I may.
Okay. Council Blais?
Could I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
We, earlier in the evening in your committee, if you vote this out of committee tonight, and don't vote on it tonight, and you find out between now and next week, we are going to meet, and this is something that could be voted like that, same as Madeline's heat, I believe that should have been done the same way. Vote it out of committee tonight, I think a phone call tomorrow will probably straighten both of those things out. You won't be waiting until the middle of February, I mean, January, to correct these.
Council, I like your suggestion. I like your suggestion. So let's vote this out of committee, if I may, if you're done?
Yeah, I just, it's just a suggestion.
I like the suggestion, and I'd like to revisit our prior motion, and you rescind, you rescind it.
Yep.
So let's, let's, let's take care of this one first. We need to discover whether or not the code is from, the code is from two thousand fourteen, hasn't been updated. And...
I guess, Mike, just to be clear, Council Conkey, if I may, my question is, have there been any playground code or ADA changes since two thousand and fourteen that may affect the price? And if the answer's no, there were changes, but it won't affect the price, then fine. If the answer's yes, and it will affect the price, then we have to bring it back to committee and talk about it.
Right, good. I've got that clearly understood. So any other questions, comments? Motion's in order, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. "If I may revisit, from the document of January 2nd, 2018, I would like to move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate nine thousand nine hundred dollars from account undesignated fund balance free cash general government to Council on Agent Engineering for the engineering of HVAC roof units."
Second.
Thank you, Council Cooper. The motion's in order, I will work to get these four questions answered. Is this a replacement? Is it connected to the boiler issue? Is it first or second floor? And is it for ventilation purposes? Any other questions on the HVAC for the senior center? All the motions in order, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. "From the document of January 2nd, I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate sixty-five thousand four hundred nine dollars from account 1-0-0-0-3-5-9-0-0-0, designated fund balance free cash general government to account 1-6-3-0-1-0-0-0-5-8-7-0-6-9, Recreation Number Six Dump Truck for a new Recreation Department Dump Truck."
Second.
Thank you, Council Cooper. This is in the capital improvement plan. Interesting, they've got rec. three and rec. two in the, in, in, in the capital improvement plan, I'm going to pick rec. two because it's the number one priority. "This capital project entails purchasing a new Ford F-550 four-by-four diesel automatic dump truck equipped with a dump body and snowplow, tow package, load cover, running boards, a strobe light, two-way radio, and the city on this vehicle replace Recreation Six."
Just a quick point of order, this is where it came down in the motion is six? Wouldn't you have to vote it on six and not what's in the capital improvements book? Just out of curiosity?
Yes, the money is going to a dump truck account. And it doesn't really matter whether it's rec. six, rec. two, or rec. three. The question is, should we buy a dump truck for the Recreation Department? Yes, Council Cooper?
So I, I think it matters because it says in the motion, rec. number six dump truck. So I think it, and my suggestion would be the same for this motion as it has for the other two of it, just because it's been crazy, and let's get the answers and vote it out, and then we can make a decision next week.
I like that.
Thank you.
Comfortable?
Much better.
Okay. So, any other comments on the dump truck? Very good. Motion's in order, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We're making progress. "I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate seven hundred thousand dollars from account 1-0-0-0-3-5-9-0-0, undesignated fund balance free cash, general government to fund number three five four eight, Finberg Field, for the Health Department's remediation of Finberg Fields."
Second.
So it looks like the Health Department wound up with this hot football, which has bounced to the air, rained back, and, Health Department's on page forty-one. on page 41. Right, exactly what I thought. It's not in the capital improvement plan, but there's no question about what the project entails. This is the binder on the Finberg Field, and the remediation is for preparation and submission of a mass DEP review and approval of the site cleanup plan in accordance with requirements of the MCP regulations, to conduct precaracterization of soil lead levels at these locations to delineate excavation limits in advance of mobilizing excavation equipment to the site, and to conduct soil excavation and removal, including onsite treatment of lead-contaminated soil if required, to meet permit regulations of an out-of-state disposal facility and restore the excavations to original condition. We have talked about this ad nauseam in the past. I do have the full documentation, which I will leave with the administrative assistant, Virginia Stewart, so that if anyone wishes to review the entire mine, it will be in City Council, okay? And, um, the project, I believe, was going to be executed by Camp Dresser McGee. They were the people who came in originally in 1989 when we first learned there may be a problem there, and, um, CDM Smith is the person, uh, the firm that prepared this binder, and there's been a lot of discussions about, um, whether or not this number's going to be enough to take care of the project or not. It's an estimate, and it's also, uh, subject to whether or not this will go out to bid and be done by somebody else other than Camp Dresser Smith. So, all of those things are not issues that I think would hold this up. We have a mandate from the state that this field has to be taken care of, and we have a neighborhood that wants to see this done. Uh, that concludes my comments. Do you have, does anyone else have any questions about the motion? Yes, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. This being in my ward, I'm going to be happy to see this cleaned up and taken care of. And that concludes my comments.
So, you're endorsing our support?
Yes, I am.
And you're going to get it. All in favor?
Aye.
From the docket of January 2nd, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $409,000 from account 6-000-359-000, Wastewater Enterprise Fund retained earnings, to fund number 3222, Wastewater Second Stage Lift, regarding the need for funds for the design and replacement of eight valves for the second-stage lift pumps.
Second.
Thank you, Council Cooper. I have asked Superintendent Paul Kennedy to attend our committee meeting tonight to give us further explanations. I did call him today on the phone and was happy to hear that he was available because this one is a, a big enchilada. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
These lift pumps are situated in our treatment plant where, what it, what, what their function is, is it lifts the, the flow from one elevation to the next, and whoever's been in our treatment plant, as you're driving down the main road, on the left, you see a big hill, and that's where our aeration tanks are, and the building in front of that is where these pumps are housed, and the flow comes through the treatment plant, goes into two tanks, which are called wet wells, and as the level rises in these tanks, these pumps come on sequentially and take the flow, all four million gallons of it, from this point up to this point, and completes our process, it goes through our biological process, and allows it to go, to keep flowing through the treatment plant, eventually it's discharged into the Ten Mile River. These, um, pumps, the valves, there's a, there's two valves on each pump, there's four pumps, so there's eight valves. They're 16-inch valves, and the valves are, there's one located on the suction side of the pump, and there's one located on the discharge side of the pump. The one on the suction side, when you close that valve, it will close off the head pressure from that wet well from coming back into that pump. The valve on the discharge side will close off any head pressure coming down from our aeration system, there's a, a large header pipe that goes to that side. Our problem is, these pumps do not seal anymore. They have a resilient seal on them, it's a, it's a soft seal. We use lime in our process. Lime builds up on these, on the insides of these valves, and where they seat, there's like a, a groove in, in that valve where this pump seats. These valves do not seat, which won't allow us to take these offline, to do any kind of maintenance on them. The pumps now are, need some, some, um, serious maintenance, we can't take them offline, so, um, because they don't seal. So, what we need to do is change those, change those valves. We're going to change it to a different valve, so these valves, when you crank them down, it's actually a knife gate that'll, that'll dig right into that, that groove that seats it, and any lime deposits, grit, or anything that's in there is going to get crushed down, and those, those valves are going to seal. Um, you know, without that, we can't, we can't work on these pumps. Sooner or later, they're going to fail, and we're not going to be able to pump, and if those pumps fail, we cannot, uh, the sewers will, will back up in our plant, and then eventually up into the city. So, um, it's very important that, that these get done, we can't do any maintenance on them.
So, we discussed today, these four pumps all work together. They sequentially switch off when only one pump is needed, they're variable-controlled drive pumps, all four pumps are needed depending on the sewage flow of the time that this, the system is working. You, we're taking this $409,000 to do the engineering, design, bidding, construction, and it includes a 25% contingency, which is higher than normal. Usually, we see 10%. Is there a reason why we're going to 25% on contingency?
Um, you know, just in case they, they run in some unforeseen, they gotta, they're going to have to bypass pump also to, um, allow us, they're going to, about a week, so they're going to have to have these, uh, big generators in there with bypass pumps that they can bypass the flow while they're doing this. Um, you know, we, we, this was a recommendation of the, of, uh, the engineers to go with a 25%, 10% contingency, and, you know, if, if we don't use it, just like every, all the other money that we appropriate from retained earnings, it'll go back in our, in the Wastewater Enterprise General Fund, uh, retained earnings fund, so...
Back into the retained earnings fund?
Yes.
Right, right. Um, and that fund is currently, um, Council, please, you pass on two sheets of paper. The fund, current, the current fund balance for the Wastewater Retained Earnings Fund is how much, Superintendent?
There was, we started off with $1,715,686. Since that time, council approved, uh, $17,500 to be put back into my professional services account. If this 409 is approved, um, it'll bring it down to, uh... Well, what I did was, I figured it, you're going to be looking at that other appropriation I'm looking at for the emergency sewer work that's going to be done on South Main, there's 226.5 there, okay? So, the balance of this account after all these things are taken out would be $1,062,686.
So, um, in the history of your tenure with the Wastewater Department, um, you've seen some pretty big and expensive sudden emergency situations.
Yes.
The most expensive of which, um, has not exceeded $250,000, am I correct?
Yeah, this one is probably about the biggest, yeah.
This is about the biggest project we've undertaken. The 16-inch valves that you're describing, the eight of them, they, it seems that the majority of the $409,000 is in the, is in the engineering and the process of replacing the valves rather than the actual purchase of the valves. The valves are not that expensive.
Yeah, the, the, the eight valves is $108,800. There's also some other pieces, you know, that are also needed, um, piping, spools that fit between the valves that have to be fitted, um, and then, you know, that's basically the cost of the material, then, um, like, like I said, we have, uh, cleaning of the wet well when they're in there, um, bypass pumping, the construction portion of it, so, um, you're right, a big part of it is the construction. They got to get in there and bypass all that flow, and, uh, get in there and pull these, physically pull these valves out.
And, um, so you feel that for the six months that are remaining in the fiscal year, a balance of, uh, $1,062,000 is a safe, safe bet?
Yes. Um, you know, if, the other thing that's going to be taken from there that I know of right now is the Wastewater Department's share of the water meters, so we might see another 50 or 60 coming out of there, so, but anything other than that, um, you know, we're going to have around $1 million in there, and anything unforeseen comes up, nobody knows, but we'll have a, a $1 million sitting there if something does come up.
And so, the question being asked at home, is this going to affect my water rate? And the answer is no.
No.
Correct. Any questions from councils? Council Perkin?
Thanks for coming in and explaining that, Paul.
You're welcome.
It's been my experience that usually it's the design that is what costs more than the actual, it's kind of like going to a mechanic, you know, the parts aren't so much, but the labor is, so, but thank you for coming in tonight. I, I, anytime, um, either you come in front of us or there's an emergency measure as it pertains to water or wastewater, I always remember what former counselor Churchill always said, is that, you know, water, wastewater are our biggest resources and need to be managed appropriately, um, and so you will have my support of the process on the full council.
Thank you.
Council Blais?
One quick question while you're here, Paul.
Does these pumps have a backup? They all have to operate at once?
No, they don't all operate at once, depending on how much flow we got coming into the, into that building.
Yeah.
Um, when the level rises in the tank, there, like, there's a, there's a wall here, and these tanks are, I mean, these, they're, the pipes for each individual pump goes through the wall.
What I'm trying to ask you, suppose one pump kicks the bed completely?
Yeah.
You have sufficient...
Absolutely.
So, there is a backup?
Absolutely.
And there is no way, just for my, that you can shut one down and repair it?
Not without being able to close these valves.
You definitely need that backup to, to help the flow?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
These pumps are 4,200 gallons, 4,300 gallons a minute.
Yeah.
Each pump, so they're...
I just was under the impression that you needed them all operating, and it didn't make sense to me that there wouldn't be some type of
Yeah.
backup or insurance.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? Motion's in order, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Your motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the business that the Capital Improvement and City Development Committee has to bring before the council tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion's in order, all in favor?
Aye.
I declare the Capital Improvement City Development Committee adjourned at 8:02. Thank you for your attention.
Oh, you got one more?
There's one more, three. Mr. Cooper?
I'm ready. All right. Call personnel and human services to order at 8:03. From the docket of January 2nd, 2018, entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $7,080.38 from account 11241000-578300, citywide reserve fund for transfer, to account 11111000-51100, city council salary regarding the need for funds to cover the anticipated expenses due to the salary of the new administrative assistant and the temporary administrative assistant for the remainder of fiscal year 2018.
Second.
Thank you. So, we all received the memo, we've, um, now hired a, um, permanent staff, and for the orientation and onboarding process, we need these additional funds to cover, uh, the salary. Frank, uh, President Cook did send a memo to the mayor, the mayor sent it down to us with our documents to cover that. Any, any questions, Sir Frank?
If I may, yeah, um, very, very briefly, um, the, the amount of money that's being appropriated was to make sure that we had, Linda was going to be here to make sure that there was initial training for Virginia, and then, um, because there are things that will, that you will encounter for the first time over the next , in any month of the fiscal year, um, there was additional monies that were, uh, that are being provided to make sure that, up to a certain number of hours per week, that was in the, in the memo if you read it, that Linda will be available. It doesn't mean that she will necessarily be in here, but we're going to be seeing over, basically, over the next four weeks, Linda will be here training Virginia, and then the amount of time is going to, she's going to be available, you know, when necessary, um, checking to make sure that everything's, you know, going fine and so forth, um, and this was an agreement that was worked out, Deb Gould was involved, um, in this, as was, um, Linda in terms of the number of hours and the, and the amount of money that was needed, uh, including, we looked at what the balances were, um, with the changes in the council that'll be coming up and have already occurred, um, with the, you know, the loss of one counselor, um, a counselor coming in six weeks later, um, and the, the former admin person leaving. So, this is just money to make sure that we're covered for that amount of time.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Sorry, I'm writing in. Um, the second motion, I'm, the second item I want to talk about, and then we'll see what happens. So, I, I had an opportunity to talk to, um, Council Blair asked about bringing out an appointment, um, and I spoke to, um, Council Blair and I are on the same committee, um, so I spoke to the, um, mayor-elect about, um, things in the committee. I called him as well about the $6.23 million that had come down, and I wanted to understand sort of his position on the borrowing and the $700,000 to Finberg Field and other items that were brought down in last week's communication, so I did reach out to him. He, um, he has the list of all of the appointments, uh, coming due in February, and wanted an opportunity to, uh, meet any individuals that are newly appointed and asked to hold off on any new appointments, so I wanted to put that out there and talk through it. It sounded reasonable to me, um, and in his memo, Duff did say, "I am available should any member of the council, member-elect, or if the mayor-elect whorow have any questions for me." So, I sort of saw it as an opportunity for, uh, Duff and, um, Duff White and the mayor-elect to connect on one's interest and then the appointment to, to the board and, um, see where that led us. Any, Council Blair, I...
This's been in the works a long time, and I personally think this gentleman deserves that position, and it was sent down. My thought would be to vote on it. This council knows that gentleman as well as, probably better than the new mayor-elect knows him, and it was a good appointment, it's been in the works for quite some time, and I'd like to vote on it. I think this... I think this council has the ability to vote on it.
I, I don't disagree that we have the ability to vote on it, but I also think that, you know, it came up as part of this conversation and not necessarily picking out one particular individual, but he said, because, and the whole impetus for the discussion on boards and commissions was around substance abuse and the disability commission, one of which he mentioned in his, in his campaign. And I wanted to understand where he sat on that and I wanted to offer myself for helping get the substance abuse council started and resurrected. So I, I think that the, you know, we can, we could bring it out, but, Council Hegney?
Thank you. So what was the appointment again?
Police commission.
Police commission.
It was received December 18th. I don't know, that doesn't seem like...
The only thing is, I'm going back in my memory and when we had a motion come before us, there was a little conflict. And I don't, I wanna make sure total objectivity for this individual. Cause I remember when we talked about the child safety zone. It was a little contentious, okay? And that's the only thing is, I wanna make sure there's total objectivity for this person in that appointment. If we voted it tonight, he'd have my support. I would support the person. But I do go back into that cachet back there and I can remember some heat.
I, I remember it well, now that you mention that. Council Jackson and then Council Blair?
Thank you. I don't say a lot, but I listen. And I know in the mayor's communications, recently since the election, he does put in that, and it's in tonight's communication, please note that Mayor-elect Huroh was present for the interview.
Right.
I've noticed that the last couple of communications that we have received from our mayor. So I just went back to look into last, to the 19th and it does not say that with the appointment of Mr. White, who, yes, we all know and respect, but I get it. I under, you know, I remember years and years ago when I was chairman of personnel, I remember having Saturdays and President Cook, you remember this, I would have a Saturday when all those names would come down and I'd just invite them all here on a Saturday and we'd have coffee and tea and, you know, introduce them to the councillors who could make it here just in... So I understand, I think respectfully so for both ends. We can hold this off, cause I don't know anything about it being in the works, but it's not in this communication, you know, it's not like it's written now, so it, it doesn't seem like the mayor-elect was involved in this discussion. So if that's all he's asking for, what's the big deal? He's a great guy.
Yeah. Council Delissio?
Duff White is.
Thank you. Duff White, I think, would be an amazing addition to the police commission. There's no doubt in my mind with that. I guess when I'm looking at it just from a procedural standpoint, I understand where Mrs. Jackson's coming from. The sitting mayor sent down a request. It's in the committee. I think this discussion is the right discussion to have. I think we need to look at who's the right person for, for the right position. I do feel that Duff is the right person for that job. I think he's demonstrated that as a civilian, as a councillor. He'll continue to do such. He's the type of volunteer that we're all, always saying that we need to get involved. I, I guess I'm just questioning more, why would we do a two and a half month appointment? That's what, what I'm struggling with, just, I've never seen it. So, if there's any way we could get that answered, I think that would be appropriate. But I do urge the mayor-elect that regardless what happens here tonight, to please consider Duff White, whether that's a conversation that needs to happen between the two of them. I think when, when we find a volunteer for, for a board so important as this board that we're talking about tonight, to find someone who's as vested as Duff has been, I think is, is a unique thing. So that would...
Thank you for those comments and I think that Duff expresses that he's open to that and so did Mayor-elect Huroh when I spoke to him. So I, again, and we wouldn't even be having this conversation if we didn't have this special meeting.
Sure.
Right? This would've gone over into the next, into the next term. So, our last meeting was supposed to be last week and just because we have the other appointments that the mayor-elect was involved in, to read into the record tonight, is the reason why we're sitting here tonight really and we, because Council Blair asked to have this meeting, is the only reason why I had the meeting and for your thing that you needed to do this evening as well. So, otherwise, we would've been outta here probably an hour, 14 minutes ago, cause it would've been quick.
10 minutes.
Counsel Blair?
I'd just make one comment. Mr. White is highly recommended by the chief of police for this position and at this point, I think he actually, I'm not, it's not gospel, but I believe that we need a police commissioner over there. They're a little shorthanded for a couple of different reasons, but that's the reason I asked you to bring him forward, because I can't see waiting. You know, when you have the perfect candidate for the job and it is sent out by the present administration, with all respect, with the recommendation from my chief of police, and I think it would be advantageous to get the gentleman on board there.
Counsel... Oh, I'm sorry, Council, President Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Cooper. You know, many, many times we have people who are being appointed by, by the mayor, we usually have the meet and greet because we, in some cases, it is just a name on a piece of paper that some of us may know. Duff White is a person who some of us, a number of us served with. He was on the council, he's pictured on, one of these, one of these pictures on the walls, on walls here. But when he was here, he was a very effective councillor. He did his homework. He came prepared. He always had the best interests of the city in mind. He actually dealt with some issues involving public safety, including, you know, the sex offender issue, if you may remember, where it was a very large issue in the city during, during part of the time that he was, he was here in office. Now again, I know this is expiring, I understand, you know, the conversation that you had with the mayor-elect. But this wasn't done by, by the current mayor. This term, the term's to expire February 2018. There's obviously work that boards have to be done and the whole city's in a, in a state of transition at this point, which often happens between the November and the January date. But again, normally, keep in mind that the appointments for the, all the various committees, there are certain people whose, not everybody in the city gets up for reappointment at the same time. It only happens interestingly to us who are elected officials, but the appointed officials, it is, it's a much more staggered. There's ongoing work that these boards have to do. This is only going to be to February of 2018. I believe that there is things that this commission needs to do. There's only three people on, on the commission. Mr. Delissio was a member of that commission at one time. So, you know, if you're down to only, with a vacancy existing, you're down to one person, the committee basically, you know, can't operate. I know that Council Preger and I, for example, had a traffic study commission meeting a month ago and they couldn't meet because, although they had gathered, it was because they didn't have a quorum. But again, this is only until February and the new appointments will come down by the new mayor in February this year. So I don't see the harm with going forward, making sure the police, the police commissioners can do their, their job right now. We know that there's a good quality candidate and then after that, it's up to the mayor-elect whether, this is ending in February, whether or not it's going to be, you know, reappointed. So I would just respectfully suggest that we, we move forward with this and, and basically we know that come February, this is gonna be up, up before us again anyways. Thank you.
Council Blair? I mean, Council Paul, I'm sorry. You were next.
Thank you. You know, and originally my thoughts would've been, and I agree that the mayor-elect, you know, he's the person that's coming on board now and it's really the people that he has to work with for the next couple, you know, years that he's in the term and, you know, it is his right in my mind to be able to, you know, meet these people. So I think that's perfectly acceptable. But then based on what councillor, our President Cook just said, he does have, he will have an opportunity to do that. So this is, so if we can keep the, if we, we can actually do two wonderful things here. The first wonderful thing is to keep this commission going, keep it viable. The second wonderful thing is to also do what you would like to do, councillor, thank you, which is to allow the mayor-elect the opportunity to make those decisions and he will indeed have that opportunity to do that. So we can actually do two things, so...
Sure. Let me, let me just be clear, it's not me. This is at the request of the mayor-elect in our conversation, asked that, and again, I'm gonna point you back to December 18th, 2017 is when he sent this in and he says, "If the mayor has any questions, call me." Mayor-elect has any questions, call me.
Does he call?
Did he call?
No, not yet, but he intends to. I think we heard a lot tonight that it's the holidays and again, December 18th and we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it if it wasn't for the special meeting. Council Preger?
I don't, I don't mean to drag your committee...
Sure. You can keep dragging.
However, I think it might be helpful, in my, I, I'm almost embarrassed to say that I'm, what does a police commissioner do? What is their job? So, you know, as, you know, councillor, President Cook said, you know, the people that are appointed to the traffic study commission, they have a docket, there's business that we have to move along in a, in a speedy, it's like, it's important work that has to take place every single month and when we have a shortage, that's a concern. I don't recall any recommendations coming in front of this municipal body or anywhere else as it pertains to a police commissioner, so I just didn't know if maybe I could have a slight synopsis that maybe you could call Mr. Delissio, being that he was one and what he did?
Absolutely.
That might clarify it a little bit.
So, Delissio?
I think it's a fair point, Council Preger, and when we were there, a lot of the times, and this goes to Council Cook's point, there've been times that they haven't been able to meet because the numbers haven't been there and I'm glad you brought that up. One of the members, you know, had been battling an illness for quite some time, you know, so getting the quorum was, was difficult for that. So now just being down one body for as long as they have, it makes it difficult. What we're there for is a really an ad hoc committee to work with the chief to help with some of the decisions, some of the obstacles and challenges facing the police. It's, it's a different committee than what the traffic, we're not gonna have business that's gonna be referred to the police commission as much. It's very similar to the firefighters, to the public health committee, things of that nature. We don't, there weren't voting powers such as the board of assessors. It's very much an ad hoc and support sort of committee for the police.
May I follow up?
Mm-hmm.
So, how often do they, how often do you meet? And is there currently anything that is particularly, I get, my question would be, is, do we know if there's anything currently pressing that needs to be resolved prior to a conversation that could take place between the mayor-elect and the potential appointee? I guess those are...
There are dockets, if I may, Council...
Yes.
Vice President Cooper, there are dockets. I don't, I can't speak to what's going on currently.
Sure.
However, when we were there, when I was there rather, it was, there were times it was trying to, cause if one person wasn't there, you know, all of a sudden, you don't have that quorum. So, I think that it would be disingenuous to me to answer what's currently happening on this police commission. I have this term sat on in a couple of different meetings, talked about upcoming hirings or potential retirements, things that needed to be planned. It was good to be there and an observer. But I think what's important in Council, and President Cook, you brought this up, is every other board, every board needs to be filled. That's why we have the boards and the positions. I think it would be prudent, even if it is just the six weeks, seven weeks, whatever it would be, to get that person on there and then however the cards are gonna play and fall after that, they will. But I think this board should at least have the opportunity to have a quorum at the meetings.
Hold on one second. President Cook?
Thank you. You know, one of the, you know, one of the things in the city, I mean, we have, we have a variety of different boards and commissions. You've all seen the list, right? We've all been involved and those who've been sitting here in February and March will, will be making reappointments or new appointments as the case may be. You know, all of the boards that we have in the city are important or else we wouldn't have them. Some are more active than others, some come before us with items, some don't. Some of these boards are, you know, deal with matters and it only gets up to the council level sometimes when there is a, a matter maybe perhaps in the appropriation or something. For example, like, you know, the, the parallel board to the board of police commissioners, that Council Delissio served on is the board of fire commissioners. Right now, they are, you know, they haven't been before us in a long time. However, I can tell you that early on in my career on the city councillor, we weren't hearing anything from them on a regular basis and were involved in things because at that time, we were busy relocating and building a brand new fire station in South, in South Attleboro. So there are times when some of these boards will be becoming for us. But I think as elected officials, we have to, we have to remember that, you know, these boards are made up of citizens within the city that want, want to serve. In many cases, it, it becomes a, you know, a proving ground for people who then many times move up, you know, to elected positions. As elected officials, I believe strongly in the boards and then we have to trust them and at the same time, they do a tremendous amount of, of, you know, work for the city, all of the boards, in terms of any of the various issues that come up on the boards. So, so again, just because we don't always hear from them doesn't mean that they're not out there, they're not active, they're not doing things that are benefiting, you know, the residents of the city. And I think we really need to make sure that we, you know, we ask the right questions when people come up before us. I think we have a strong history of doing that, doctor referred to the, or she used to, and, and really in many cases, to trust the boards. After this meeting, I have to agree with Council Cooper, I figured that we were probably gonna be out of here at 7:15, at a time that I had called for a special meeting. I did not expect that anybody was gonna call a committee meeting tonight. So, you know, so again, that was totally beyond my control. So, and when we get into the regular meeting, it's just gonna be communications and voting on these other matters. So, once we get out of the committee, it's, we should move on more rapidly. Thank you.
Council Jackson?
Thank you. And you're right, Mr. Cook, President Cook, excuse me. You did say like, it's be like 10 minutes, we'll be in and out here in no time.
We're just gonna be...
I know. I know. So Vice President Cooper, being a member of your committee, why don't we just vote this out of committee tonight and we can do what we just suggested with Council Conti that next week, you can vote it then? Because maybe between now and then, since this conversation has gone on for so long about an appointment, a volunteer, that we just take care of it now, maybe between now and then, mayor-elect and they can converse and get together and celebrate the new year.
I'm with you.
Okay.
So, "From the docket of January 2nd, 2018, I entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Duff White, 12 Carnegie Way, to fill an unexpired term on the board of police commissioners, term to expire February 2018."
Second.
So, we just had a lengthy discussion about it. We will make, you know, they can connect and we can vote it out next week. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. 8:27.
Any, any, any motions to get to me?
Yes.
I gotta check with Linda on, on a couple of matters. See if any, some of these things that I have. Just give me a minute or two?
Do you have a minute for tonight? Did you decide not? I have an emergency measure. That's all I have. This has been in the works for a long time. This has been in the works for a long time. So. I know.
I don't know what you want to say. It's true. It's what I see.[567.16]
Thank you, you may be seated. Just a reminder about turning off the phones to my colleagues and those in attendance if it does interfere with our broadcast. Various parts of the city. Again, this is a special meeting, so we're going to be very limited in terms of various things we're going to be doing. I'm going to ask, of course, our City Clerk, Steve Withers, to read the notice for the special meeting, please.
December 19th, 2017, to the members of municipal council from Frank Cook, council president, councilor. By authority of Article 2, Section 2-7(c) of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter, hereby call special meeting of municipal council as follows. Date Wednesday, December 27th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. The purpose is to receive the mayor's communication regarding three new department head appointments and any other matters or other legal matter that may come before the council. C.C. Mayor Kevin J. Dumas.
Thank you. So again, as I mentioned earlier, the real purpose was just to get the mayor's communication, but there are some other items that we're going to be dealing with. And then in the form of committees, I'm not going to want to call on all committees, but at this time I would ask City Clerk to please read the mayor's communication for this evening.
December 27th, 2017, dear municipal councillors, as you are aware, on June 20th, 2017, your honorable body voted to repeal Attleboro's Special Act, an act increasing the expenditure limit on revolving funds in the city of Attleboro. It has come to our attention that in order to properly repeal this act, the following vote needs to be taken. Motion to petition the General Court to enact the following legislation to repeal an act increasing the expenditure limit on revolving funds in the city of Attleboro, Sections 1-2 of Chapter 116 of the Acts of 2006, which the legislature may vary in form and substance within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. An act to repeal an act increasing the expenditure limit on revolving funds in the city of Attleboro, Chapter 116 of the Acts of 2006, being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, an act increasing the expenditure limit on revolving funds in the city of Attleboro, Sections 1-2 of Chapter 116 of the Acts of 2006, is hereby repealed. Section 2, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Judge, in appropriations committee, please.
I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Michael Tyler, 196 County Street, Attleboro, Mass. 02703, to fill an unexpired term of Superintendent of Public Works, term to expire February 2020. Mr. Tyler was offered employment with the city of Attleboro on December 21st, 2017, under a temporary 90-day appointment in accordance with Section 3.3b of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter. Please note that Mayor-elect Hiru was present for the interview. Resume in your packets.
Personnel and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Derek Corsi, 467 Seven Mile Road, Hope, Rhode Island, 02831, to fill an unexpired term of Superintendent of Parks and Forestry, term to expire February 2019. Mr. Corsi was offered employment with the city of Attleboro on December 19th, 2017, under a temporary 90-day appointment in accordance with Section 3.3b of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter. Please note that Mayor-elect Hiru was present for the interview. Resume in your packets.
Personnel and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Library Director Joan Pilkington Smith regarding the receipt of a ALSC, or Association for Library Services to Children, funded grant, strengthening communities through libraries, in the amount of approximately $5,000. The library will be working cooperatively with local agencies and teachers to bring this interactive sensory programming to families utilizing STEM building skills with nature and animals. There is no match for this grant. In accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12, with the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to approve expending such funds in any future grant amendments. Copies in your packets.
Judge, in appropriations committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from City Auditor Deborah Gould regarding the need to establish a fund to reserve E-rate revenue for the school department. Currently, there is no distinction on the origin of E-rate funds and therefore refunds that are due to the school department would be deposited into the general fund as revenue. It would not be available to the school department. In order to restrict E-rate funds for the future use by the school department, I hereby request your honorable body establish a special purpose stabilization fund under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5b. Copies in your packets.
Judge, in appropriations committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Wastewater Superintendent Paul Kennedy regarding the need for funds for an emergency repair for a collapsing sewer main at South Main and Mill Streets. An emergency waiver was granted to the city from the Office of General Counsel in order to omit the formal bidding process. The estimate to repair the sewer main is $195,000. In addition, a 10% contingency and approximately $12,000 for police details are required. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $226,500 from account wastewater enterprise fund retained earnings to account wastewater sewer mains. Copies in your packets. In accordance with Article 2, Section 2-9b of the city charter of the city of Attleboro, I respectfully request your honorable body to consider this as an emergency measure.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Personnel Director Owen Bebo regarding two changes to the current approved rules and regulations for the city's exempt group. The first would be an amendment to address the way sick leave is charged. The second change would add Article 22 Sick Leave Bank. This article provides for the establishment of a sick leave bank for exempt employees as it exists for other employees. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to approve the requested changes to the rules and regulations for the city's exempt group. Copies in your packets.
Personnel and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Veteran Services Ken Bachteter regarding the following donations. $1,000 in Stop and Shop gift certificates from the Attleboro Elks Lodge, 1014. $300 in Stop and Shop gift certificates from the DAV, Chapter Number 91 of Attleboro. $300 in Stop and Shop gift certificates from the Holiday Spirit Committee. In accordance with Section 1-2 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the city of Attleboro. Copies in your packets.
City Privacy and Claims Committee, please.
Sincerely, Kevin J. Dumas, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So, it did take about 15 minutes as I suspected it was going to take. Take the minute going. Okay, we're going on to the committee reports, and what I'm going to be doing is, Councilor Jackson has to leave, so I'm going to recognize her first. But hold on, I have something for you first, before we start. I just had to make, I just had to do this.
(Laughter).
And it's all done.
You should have wore it.
I was going to, but then it was like, I didn't have enough time. If it was out on the other side, I was going to step by.
Is it camera?
There you go.
What's it say?
Brady.
President Brady.
After she saw me.
Yes.
I understand that it was on camera. I had the most astonished look in my face, and I looked around to see who you're talking about. So I thought you'd appreciate that.
I got a little nervous when I saw a football shirt, though, I have to tell you that. Because I'm like, ooh, no, I'm not into football. But yes, thank you, President Brady.
Councilor Jackson, if you would.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Reporting for the Committee on Public Works, from the supplemental docket of January 2nd, 2018, I move to adopt the following emergency preamble that the Attleboro Municipal Council vote to take action as provided in the city charter, Section 2-9b regarding the emergency which presently exists relative to the request of the mayor to appropriate $226,500 from account 6000-35900 wastewater enterprise fund retained earnings to account 6000-589070 wastewater sewer mains regarding the needs for funds for an emergency repair for a collapsing sewer main at South Main and Mill Streets. Due to the time constraints involved, the nature of the emergency makes it necessary to take action without waiting the prescribed time as provided in the city charter.
A second.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is in order. Are there any comments, please?
Yes, as we all just heard, this just came down, the mayor's communication this evening. We had received an email this afternoon, just a little heads up that this was happening. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read to you the memo that we have received from Paul Kennedy, our wastewater superintendent. Recently, during some preventative maintenance being performed on a sewer main located at the intersection of South Main and Mill Streets, a problem was discovered by a department sewer collection crew. It appears an eight-inch sewer main is beginning to collapse underground. When we normally perform the preventative maintenance on this particular sewer main, the procedure is to run our large high-pressure jet nozzle through the main to remove any obstructions that may be present in order to keep the main clear and free-flowing. However, the jet nozzle ran into an obstruction that wouldn't allow it to pass. At that point, we changed to a smaller nozzle, and it did pass through the main, which led us to believe we have a problem occurring underground. We then decided to run our video camera through the sewer, I can't imagine that, to identify what the problem might be. It was then we discovered the sewer main in several areas was buckling underground. The main is an old clay pipe that transitions to asbestos. Approximately 50 feet of sewer main must be removed and replaced. It is also quite deep, at a depth of 14 feet. And the area is heavily surrounded by several other utilities. Walsh Contracting Company was called to the site to give us an estimate to make the repair. Walsh estimates 10 days to complete the work. At least three police details will be needed for eight hours a day, and bypass pumping of sewerage will be required around the clock to isolate the main during the repair. Walsh estimates also include paving the entire intersection from curb to curb and returning back in the spring to grind or mill 1.5 inches of depth from the top layer of the asphalt, then replace the 1 and 1/2 inches for the finished layer. That's what I have.
Thank you.
And we all received this tonight in the mayor's communication as well.
Okay, that explains pretty well what's going on. Does anybody have any concerns or questions? Councilor Conti.
Mr. President, I forgot to ask Superintendent whether or not this project is going to close Wall Street, because it's right there. Can we get an answer to that question, Mr. President?
Yes. Councilor Jackson, do you have an answer to that?
I do not have an answer to that, since this is an emergency this evening, but through the President, can I ask Superintendent?
Yes, yes. Since you're having to be here.
There's going to be some detours there. I'm not sure if it's going to close Wall Street or not at this point.
Okay.
But, you know, there's going to be three offices, detouring traffic. It may close part of it, maybe detour down the New Riverfront Drive over to Olive, you know. I don't know exactly how they're going to do that yet, but it's going to involve like three offices.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any other questions on the emergency preamble?
None, none from me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor, you're all set, too, I presume?
I am all set, thank you.
Okay, so if not any other questions or comments, we'll proceed. This will, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Delicio. And as a reminder, as an emergency preamble, this requires a 2/3 vote of the entire council, that's eight votes for passage.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mrs. Perica.
Yes.
Vice President Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Hagney.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
To the motion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I move to approve, as an emergency measure, the request of the mayor to appropriate $226,500 from account 6000-35900 wastewater enterprise fund retained earnings to account 6000-589070 wastewater sewer mains regarding the need for funds in emergency repair for a collapsing sewer main at South Main and Mill Street.
Thank you. The motion is in order. Are there any comments, please?
No other comments for this emergency measure, thank you.
Does anybody have any other concerns or comments? Hearing none, we'll have a, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Hagney.
Yes.
Vice President Cooper.
Yes.
Mrs. Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
President Cook, I have no further business this evening, but I would like to call for a meeting at the appropriate time at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now we're going to go back to the, as I mentioned, Councilor Jackson will leave, so I'm going to go around to the, Councilor Delicio.
Last one, thank you, President Cook.
You're welcome.
Reporting for ordinances, elections, legislative matters committee, I have one piece of business tonight from the docket of November 7th, 2017. I move to adopt the following ordinance, ordinance relative to a temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments, be it ordained by the city Attleboro Municipal Council that Chapter 1 general provisions of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro is hereby amended, adding the following new section, temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments. I would request waiving of the reading as amended in committee earlier.
I was going to recommend that, since we're right about an hour or so ago, so.
Two hours.
Unless anybody objects to it, I'm going to waive the reading.
No objections.
Essentially, this is, we. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion is in order. Are there any comments, please?
Yeah, briefly, we talked about this about two hours ago in committee. The only change is we will, my committee voted to change the date from December 31st to October 2nd for the expiration on the moratorium of marijuana establishments.
Okay, are there any other concerns or comments? Councilor Conti.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm not in favor of this. I know that under Part 1, Title 15 of Chapter 94g, Section 3, the local coal, the local control for the distribution of marijuana not medically prescribed is very well laid up. And through the 71, six pages, 71 pages? Through the six pages of law, this local control includes the fact that we can govern the time, we can cover the place, we can govern the manner, we can govern the number of marijuana facilities, we can prohibit the operation of one or more types of marijuana establishments, we can limit the number of retailers, we can limit the number of any type of marijuana establishment, we can govern the time and place and manner of marijuana establishment operations, we can, with some restrictions, limit the number of marijuana establishments in the city, we can prohibit the operation of one or more types of similar marijuana establishments, we can restrict public signs related to marijuana establishments, we can establish a civil penalty for violation, we can, we cannot prohibit the transportation of marijuana.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
And we can, I have the floor.
Yeah, he has the floor, but wait a minute, now, the point of order, what is your point of order?
Mr. Conti, are you?
Oh, no, 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 what is your point of order? What is the point that you're raising?
I don't know if Mr. Conti should even be voting on it.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Conti is explaining that, is my understanding is, that there's a number of things that the local control will be provided once the ordinances and laws are there, but they are not done yet. I'm just, you know, say all you're doing, correct me wrong, all that you're doing is talking about, about what we can do.
Correct, which is very clear.
Right, so.
Which is very clear. There's no, there's no questions that this is the law, that the local control has been established.
Right.
That we can charge a fee, and that we can charge a sales tax no more than 3%, and we can have a community impact fee of no more than 3%. And this law has passed. It is, it is in effect. I'm further upset that this is coming up at a time when the public really hasn't had the process of knowing that this was going to be coming out tonight. And this is on a Tuesday night, this is a Wednesday night. So I'm not comfortable voting on this, and I'm filing a chart objection.
Okay, that stops all action on this item, and we will.
Can I?
No, no, we can't, because once it's chart objection, all discussion ends on the matter.
This isn't on the matter.
Is it a point of order?
I believe that Mr. Conti has a financial interest in holding this off.
I do not. And I have not filed one.
Okay, this is, I understand the point of order that was made, but, and yet, I mean, that's, if he, if Councilor Conti indicated he doesn't have a financial, there's no evidence that can be presented, plus there was a chart objection, so that ends it.
Can I ask a procedural question?
A procedural question, yes.
This charter objection.
Yes.
This is to be taken up first at the next scheduled.
The charter objection, the charter objection stops all action on the matter.
Yeah, I understand.
For a minimum of seven days. So we cannot vote on it for seven days, but it does not have to be the first thing that's, I think you're thinking of a reconsideration?
No, that's why I asked.
Right.
Can this, will this come back in our next regular meeting?
No.
Well, you know, it can very well, because the meeting on the second.
Yeah.
Right, the very first order of business has to be, before anything else can be done, has to be the clerk runs the meeting.
Yeah.
We have the vote for the president, followed by the vote for the vice president.
Yeah.
Those two matters have to be taken care of before any other items can come.
And it's only six days.
Point of order, Mr. President, it's only six days. The point of, my point of order is that only six days left from now until our next scheduled meeting.
Right, I was getting to that.
Okay.
So, the point being that on a chart objection, everything stops for seven days, okay? So the earliest of this will come up, unless somebody calls for a special meeting, would be a week from today. Next Tuesday is only six days out, and on that in particular night, you know, this would not be coming up, as soon as we're going to be getting at, because the first two items have to be the vote for the president and the vice president. Then there can be other matters, but there will not have been six days that will have passed on this particular item. So, at that point, it'll be up to the next regular meeting, after that would be the 16th, unless somebody calls for a special meeting to bring it up early enough, okay?
Thank you.
So, at this point, let's see, next on the hit parade, Councilor Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
I can still close out there, right?
Excuse me?
So I still have to close.
Oh, yeah, you can close out, yes.
That is all the business for ordinances, elections, legislative matters. Would like to call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Good, thank you. Now we're going to, Councilor Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for the capital improvements and city development committee, I have several motions to bring up before the council convenes. From the docket of January 2nd, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to transfer the following. $3,448 from the council on age of boiling, other financing uses, to the library project. $84,553.70 from the DPW facility, other financing uses, to the library project, other financing sources. $4,934.15 from the animal shelter fund, other financing uses, to the library project, other financing sources. $346,900 from radios, fire, and police, other financing uses, to the library project, other financing sources. And $12,026.16 from the citywide reserve fund for transfer to the citywide other financing uses, and then further to transfer.
Point of order, Mr. President, I believe that some of Councilor Conti's motions require eight, and there's only seven of us here right now.
Right, and more than that.
This does require 2/3 of a vote.
Right, right.
So I make, entertain a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, hold on a second. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Is Councilor anything leaving?
Shannon, this will leave.
Okay, so now we're down to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight councils. Nine, 10, 11, okay, right. So, I'm not going to take a recess, I just.
Sure, no problem.
All right, so the point is that this, parts of this require eight, eight votes. I did want to correct, I believe that on your, on the figure you read for radios, please, I think you said, instead of $346.90, I believe you read $34,690.
Well, that's a big mistake.
So, exactly.
It is 300.
If anybody's watching home, I want to make sure that we caught it. I, okay, continue.
With that kind of money, we could have bought some serious radios.
So did you finish it? Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not quite done.
Okay.
Lastly, the, all of those funds need to be further transferred from the citywide other financing uses to the library project, other financing sources.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The motion is in order. I did want to mention, I stepped out during the committee meeting to find out, because a couple of these items being 2/3 of a vote, I asked if those should be separated out. I know you had indicated that you were planning to vote the whole, the whole thing as the 2/3s. I wanted those separated out, but I think we'll just let it ride as it is at this point.
So my comments on the motion is that this requires everyone present to support in order for it to pass. And I want to be clear that it is a strong recommendation to pass, because this is all money left over from past bonds, and some of it is money that we're paying interest on. And it is going towards to fund the $125,000 project to develop an architect and engineering plan and bid for the relibary roof. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Are there any other concerns or comments? Hold on a second. Hearing that, we will be, we will proceed with a roll call vote. The vote will begin with Councilor Delicio. This will require a 2/3 vote of the full council for passage, that's eight votes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mrs. Perica.
Yes.
Vice President Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
If we could jump ahead to my last motion, Mr. President.
Okay, let me just think.
I move to approve the request, this is from the docket of January 2nd. I move to request, move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $409,000 from the wastewater enterprise fund retains earnings to the wastewater second-stage lift regarding the need for funds for the design and replacement of eight valves in the second-stage lift pumps.
Second.
Thank you. The motion's in order. Are there any comments, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I think this was really well explained by Superintendent, so if people are tuning into this just now, go on the internet and back it up 30 minutes, and you'll see Superintendent Paul Kennedy standing at the podium, and he's explaining what this project is all about, and I don't think we need to go into additional detail at this time. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Withers, who did you have for a second on that?
Heather, I believe.
Cooper.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Cooper?
Okay.
I think they're both.
They both said at the same time, so, I was wondering who you gave the tie to. Okay, that's a good one. Are there any other, thank you, the motion's in order, are there any other comments from Hearing none, we will have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Cooper.
Yes.
Mrs. Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
The motion passes.
Mr. President, I think I will hold the remaining votes until we have a full council. We would appreciate having a capital improvement city development committee at the next appropriate time.
Counselor Cooper, you got a point?
Yes. Is just, holding the $40,000 for the Civil War monument affect your ability to apply for the grant?
No, well, we're applying for the grant, we have to be showing that, you know, that there's a funding, we have identified what our sources of funding are, so hopefully it won't, we're going to put in that the city is planning to, you know, appropriate money, instead of going down, that the council order be that, you know, that a request has been made to the council to appropriate. So you're holding all other items?
Yes.
Counselor, please.
There were some, I understood that there were some, that there was some concerns and questions about, but there were others that there weren't, like the dump truck and the mowers and things like that, so I guess I would encourage us to be able to vote those out for tonight, so that the POs can be issued and we can get those going.
I have to admit that I am confused, Counselor Conti, because, as I said, originally the purpose of the meeting was to, you know, receive the committee's communication, primarily because of the appointments, but I knew there'd be other things, that sometimes would come down, be the emergencies or whatever. And then, at that point, people started calling for committee meetings. We spent almost two hours in committee meetings, most of which was yours, and I, and my understanding from the conversations was, you were voting a lot of these things out, and we're going to be following, but asking questions, so I'm just, I'm just curious, if you feel uncomfortable saying it publicly, you can tell me later, but I have to admit, I'm curious as to why we spend that amount of time going and talking things, and that I thought, and obviously I was going to vote out tonight, and now we're not voting out tonight. I'm just curious. And if you don't want to answer, you know, in public, that's, you know, I'll understand that, you can tell me later, but I have to admit, I'm scratching my head.
We'll talk later, I've closed my meeting.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to make a note of this on my records here. Okay, Counselor Cooper, or Vice President Cooper, I would recognize you at this particular time.
Thank you. Reporting for Personnel and Human Services Committee, I have one motion this evening. From the docket of January 2, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $7,080.38 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to city council salary regarding the need for funds to cover the anticipated expenses due to the salary of the new administrative assistant and the temporary administrative assistant for the remainder of fiscal year 2018.
Second.
Thank you, the motion's in order. Are there any comments, please?
No, we talked about this in committee just about an hour ago, and thank you, Linda, for helping us onboard our new administrative assistant.
Any other concerns or comments? Hearing none, this matter requires a roll call vote, and the vote will begin, if my markets are correct, with Mr. Delicio.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mrs. Perica.
Yes.
Vice President Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Who's the second on that, President?
Ms. Perica.
Thank you. Thank you, that concludes the business for Personnel and Human Services Committee, but would call for a committee next week at the appropriate time. And if I may, two quick things. One is, I don't think Counselor Conti called for a committee meeting next week at the appropriate.
He did, he did.
Okay.
He did.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. And second, thank you, Frank, for your guidance, and we went through it last week, but, and it's 9/11, we thought it was going to be quick, but again, just a quick thank you, and this will be the last meeting for you, and I look forward to your help going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I adjourn, I did also want to thank Steve Withers, as our clerk, for all of your work, Steve, and not only your friendship, but also your work, and as I mentioned, he will be leading the next meeting. I also wanted to mention, as the sitting president, at the time that term changes, although we're sitting here in two years, the sitting council, the sitting president is responsible for getting things going when there's a turnover coming, and by that I mean that the term is ending and we're beginning anew. So, for example, on next Tuesday night is inauguration. I have, as sitting president, as in the past, and as my predecessors did, I made the arrangements working with Linda, who was here at the time, we hadn't hired for the inauguration, in terms of the council. And by that I mean, following the inauguration, the first council meeting of 2018 of the new term will be in the mini auditorium, as it has been for the last few years. We're not all dashing back to City Hall, as Mr. Blair remembers we used to do way back when. It's easier for cable, it's easier if people are there, et cetera. So that is going to take place in Illinois, and it's roughly 20 to 30 minutes after the inauguration service itself is over. And again, Mr. Withers will be running that meeting at the beginning, as those of you are tuning now, and as you all find out, Counselor Dolan. Then similarly, the council has historically, since I was on, always had its orientation meeting on the first Saturday of January following the inauguration. So again, I made the necessary arrangements for that. The meeting has been posted, that is going to be held here on Saturday, January 6, at 9 o'clock in the annex. Hopefully, someone will remember to provide, as I used to, coffee and refreshments. There is an agenda that is being posted for that meeting, and I can tell you that I worked to make sure that the various people there, Mr. Withers will be there to talk about his role, Linda, as well as Virginia will be there to talk about the role of the administrative officials, since Virginia has only been here four, six days at this point. Deb Gould has some information she wants to present, Jim Jones from cable will be presenting, Laura Galvin will be talking about, part of it may be an overlap to a certain extent with Mr. Withers in terms of conflict of interest, the open meeting law. She's also going to be talking a little bit about electronic communication, some of the things that are coming down in terms of people using social media and the problems that are developing with people using social media when they're sitting on a board and sharing information that people start commenting on, which is probably a lawsuit waiting to happen. So anyways, so that, those will be, I believe, the ascent of the people that will be there. Here's a public meeting, it'll be run by the council president. The agenda, I believe you got a copy of, or you will be getting, and I don't think that was on the original agenda, I don't know if that was fixed yet. So that's going to be on Saturday, and that's one of the things that the outgoing president, or the president at the end of the term, has to take responsibility for setting up. So that's where that was done, I wasn't trying to interfere with, you know, my successor or whatever. So I do want to thank you for all your work, I want to thank you for your patience putting up with me, and wish you all a happy new year and the best, Mr. Withers.
Just a couple of quick things, if I could, I didn't get into the thanking you last week with the rest of the council, but I did want to thank you for your guidance in the last couple of years. And also, I'd like to thank the council for a very generous and very kind Christmas gift, so thank you all very, very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. So, okay, so that does conclude all the information for the special meeting for tonight, so for the final time, I will call, I entertain a motion to adjourn.